Ready to go. Excuse me, I need one second to organize exactly where we are. Okay. Um. All right, I am ready. It looks like our quorum is ready. Shall we begin?
We are recording.
We are reporting back and ready to be undertake again for council time Wednesday, August 30, 2023. For this particular council time, we will have a short agenda, agenda, a couple of work session requests. At the end of the meeting, there will be a couple of executive sessions. And is there anything that a member of the public or council needs to add at this point in time to the agenda?
Chair, and Chair Bowerman, if I may, I'd like the council to amend the agenda this morning. If I can do that before public comments. Yes, adding one additional executive session for pending litigation for 20 minutes, and there is possible after action. So that would be the only amendment. And the other just housekeeping item, and I will talk with the chair about this during our next discussion. Just want to note for the record that Council Medveji hasn't excused absence in accordance of the rules and procedure. So I just want to note that so that it will be reflected in the minutes. We haven't been doing that. So I'll work with the chair to see if we want to put an additional agenda item on just to cover that at the beginning of all of our meetings. So that's all that I have.
I appreciate your doing that. He has long excused this particular meeting, and I think there's another one or so that are involved. And it is important that that is noted so that it's realized that he is, he is not slacking off in any way here. That is for sure. We could all vouch for that, councilors, right? Otherwise, just wait, you'll get a call in five minutes. Um, no, seriously, that is a serious matter and one that I appreciate our willingness to commit to writing and take, take the way the public intends for it to be taken. Our next item on public comment, I should point out, is public comment on agenda items only. And sometimes it seems to be a little bit confusing to folks, what is an agenda item versus what is a work session item? The two do not mix. So when we are taking a public comment item at this upcoming time period, it is on agenda items only. It is not on the work session that we just had. It is not on a work session to be imagined in the future. It is not on work sessions. It's just on agenda items. So I'm trying to hope not, you know, just be really, really clear on that so that we don't have a sense, any sense of confusion at all. So with that in mind, both folks in the hearing room and online are totally welcome and invited to give comment on the agenda. Staff, do you see any?
Yes, Chair, I do have one individual online.
Would that person? Okay, go ahead.
This is Kimberly Gohean Elbin, life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. Stop the over 30-year growth by taking our heritage of a country setting. You had a chance to stay out of the UN GMA. I'm curious why I have a presentation on fireworks now, speaking on the agenda. For the past three years, United Nations members, Vancouver City Council and its unelected government, has banned fireworks. It is, in my opinion, Mayor Ogle, as lead UN follower, would naturally not want citizens to celebrate Independence Day, especially such a great gathering of many races, brought together in unity as they celebrate freedom and liberty with their fireworks. He took our heritage away, heritage away for a socialist agenda. Fireworks are mentioned on geoengineeringwatch.org. I equate the residue from fireworks to the constant spraying the climate engineers are doing to our atmosphere. The spray, as would fireworks residue, gathers on the trees, and over the years, the trees are covered with residue ready to ignite. Our forest, forestry industry is in great distress, using millions of dollars doing nothing. Now to the minutes of August 23, that are here on the minutes. They, on that particular minute, you were, on August 16th, were passed. I'll speak to those August 16th minutes for as me, they have become a new cause in my good fight against evil doers. The documented timestamp on this particular meeting is 2:23:56, and I had to call the Clark County to find out why it is not on any Clark County website, nor recorded, and was recorded for this August 16th meeting. There are at least four minutes that were recorded as it was still on open council time meetings, and I'm asking citizens, who heard this missing minutes, to contact me at 360-593-6878. These minutes were there, they were spoken, as the Chair and Mr. Medveji targeted a patriot citizen stating this person cannot call our unelected county manager a socialist Marxist. Chair Bowerman gave an oath to stop this particular citizen, of which I believe is me. I wrote a letter to Rebecca Messenger and asked the email letter be given to the council, and they are aware of this, what I call a criminal offense, and actively targeting, targeting a Clark County citizen. Concerned citizens that spoke on August 16 minutes asked questions as to why this council is pushing through the railroad system so hard, and who, who does it benefit? I believe, and I wrote this in the letter, that the railroad will be used to mine over 890 acres in historical Shilachi Prairie. As the council wants to mine this for the rock, and the railroad will be built to carry the new rock to the bridge, and with light rail-
Your time has concluded. Are there other staff who indicate a wish to testify?
No, Chair.
Okay, then we move to old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of August 23, 2023?
My motion to approve.
A second, then.
Any discussion or edits or changes, anything? Okay, they stand approved as drafted. Thank you very much. New business, is there any? Hearing none?
I think-
Counselor reports.
Actually, I think we need to vote on the minutes. I think there was a motion and a second, but I'm not sure if there was a vote.
Oh. Well, okay, I will not be so casual in the future. What I had said was, I think, you know, hearing no objections, they are approved as drafted. But we can be much more formal if you wish. So let's just start again. We had a motion for approval of the minutes of August.
23rd.
That's interesting. Oh, there it is, August 23. I was looking down and saw the August 16. So there was a motion for approval of the minutes of August 23, and there was also a second. Is there any discussion pro or con? Hearing none. Those in favor of passing those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed. So the minutes of August 23 are duly passed. Uh, new business, we glossed over that perhaps too quickly, given the other feelings.
No new business this morning, thank you.
Okay, Counselor reports.
Chair, I have one quick report to make.
Go right ahead, Counselor Young.
Thank you. I was able to go to the Columbia Gardens grand opening yesterday. Columbia Gardens is located on 112th, you know, north of Mill Plain, and they are an apartment complex with, I think there's, I mean, there's at least 100 and something, there may even be 200, I can't remember units there. And every unit is priced at 60% AMI or less for a minimum of 40 years. So it is a well-needed project. There was an individual that spoke that was a resident there, and she was saying how nice it was to be able to afford a place that was a nice place. So it was really, really neat to be there and to see some such needed affordable housing come online. So wanted to thank the, the company that facilitated that, and it took federal, it took state, it took all kinds of different jurisdictions and, and grants and things like that to get it to, to go through.
Was there county involvement?
What was that?
Was there county involvement?
Um, no, I, I was there. There, no, there was no county funding.
I'm sure you filled the donation pot when it went by, but I meant financially speaking.
I don't believe so.
No? By the way, I said that about the donation pot facetiously, and my apologies for that. I have a tendency to have a sense of humor that my family tells me should be curtailed. I think that would be a prime example right there. So let's turn next to work session requests.
I have a comment, Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to let it be known that I'm not going to be signing, or I didn't sign the IVR memo that was recently drafted.
And I noted that at the time, I believe. And let's look back at how it is coded in our minutes and be sure that that is duly noted. Thank you.
Yeah, so we did, we did, per Counselor Belkot's request, we did remove her name from that letter before it was mailed out. So it has been mailed out without her letter, but I don't believe that was discussed during council time. So we'll make sure that the minutes this time reflect that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's pretty much SOP. Not one of those things that really should even need to be discussed when it is the wish of a particular counselor or councilors.
Thank you, Chair.
Um, work session requests.
Yes, we have two this morning. The first one is from community planning, and it's regarding the essential public facilities. So the Growth Management Act requires that the comp plan and development regulations include a process for identifying citing essential public facilities. This is per the RCW and the WAC. The Clark County Code contains a criteria for citing essential public facilities, and the code needs to be amended to include the definition of essential public facilities and a process for citing essential public facilities. So Community Planning is requesting 30 minutes with council towards the end of September to provide information and obtain direction.
When I say if we got to do it, we got to do it. Let's go for it.
I would support that. Thank you. And then the second item is on the fireworks. This is usually an annual discussion after the Fourth of July. So this is regarding the 2023 sale and use of fireworks and related impacts. It's really just to provide the information on the revenue, on calls that they got, the number of calls, what did they look like. And then, of course, if council wants to have further discussion on next steps, that's, you know, great, and we will take that direction. The staff is not asking for any changes. They're just going to provide the data to the council for your discussion, and we'll look for feedback from council.
Thank you. And Kathleen, you answered the question of staff, our, that was to staff as well during the open session on why talk about fireworks when it's August 30? That's the answer. Any other-
Yeah, and the reason why it's, and, and the reason why it's a little bit later is we were still waiting for the data to come in. So that's the, and this is normal. In the past, we have, we get data from other jurisdictions. So that's why it's a little delayed.
Without data, it's not a significant, important report.
I, I think you probably are including that, but I don't think you mentioned it just now, but like fire data will be included as well.
Yes. So any instance that, you know, and that's where the calls that were reported and information on structures or other types of calls. Yes.
And just a comment, if I may, if we can assess the overall cost to the county, and I don't know how the, each of the individual fire departments, if we're getting feedback from them in terms of what, because I imagine just generally on the Fourth of July, there's more people working, but if, what, what the impact with the fire departments have been, if that's will be part of this, or is that something separate?
So you would like to have the, the information from the fire departments, not just the fire marshal's office?
Yes.
April's in the room, so I'll, I know we do coordinate some of that data, but I'll let her provide that answer. I think we have costs, I know we have costs for Clark County and our fire investigation as far as the fire marshal. I don't know if we have specific outside of the unincorporated. So I don't know if we have the cities and how much it costs to fight those fires. We can ask, though.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
But they are not required to report that to us. I just need to point that out. I, I hope that they have their own reporting mechanism if, if they don't include their data here, but at any rate, that's-
It would be the cities, but also, also the fire departments themselves.
Right.
Just to get a, get a feel for the overall impact.
Right. I think the fire departments themselves are pretty much in tune with the need for that because they, they do collect that. So let us-
Question, question, Chair. When is this work session going to be for fireworks?
They're looking at late September or October, depending on the schedule, and it will be about an hour.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Policy issues.
We don't have any updates today. Yeah, we don't have any official updates today. I, and I know Chair, you weren't with us last week, but Jordan, our new policy analyst, started last week, and he's been busy meeting, starting to meet with councilors now, but has met a lot of the key stakeholders within the county, a lot of department heads and managers. And so we, I know next week, the council has a break, and then we'll be providing more updates the following week at council time.
Chair?
Yes, Counselor-
I have a couple of policy issues to discuss. One would be, we, I mentioned it earlier during our workshop, you know, potentially having CREDC apply for a grant, which would require some matching funds from the county to look into how we can have a better plan for our, our land, for our work land, our jobs land in the county. And I, what I would suggest is maybe we have CREDC come during some part of one of our meetings and just to suggest what that would be, what that would look like, and what the expense would be if we chose to move forward with that.
Um, let me, let, let's back up. I think it's an excellent idea. And let's back up from it just a bit. Because all of the good reporting that can come through and from CREDC need not come through grants that the county helps fund. So let's just back up and talk in general terms about cooperating ways that we may have with CREDC for production of, of good, accurate, new data. And I think we, we can open up a, a, a nice box, a box of, of data that we haven't really used before. So it would be very productive, I think it has that potential. And thank you, Counselor Young. I like the idea a lot. Okay, that's policy issues. Anything else?
One more, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Kathleen?
Yeah, I just want to make sure what council's desire is with CREDC. Are you wanting to have them come in and present information on the grant? Because I've only heard from you. I just want to make sure I'm representing the, the council.
Well, and they do it normally annually. So why not have it, have it simply expanded?
I support that as well.
And then timing wise, though I did, I mentioned that earlier, but the grant has to be applied for in September. So we would need to get on this right away.
The earliest it would be is the 13th. This council has next week off. I don't know when the grant deadline is.
I don't know that. I'll, I'll reach out and find out.
Maybe, I'm not sure how the timing will work out, but if there's a way to get information about what they would be applying for, even without having a work session, in order to determine whether or not we would like to support it, I'd like to see-
And, and the cost that we would have to pass. So that would be helpful, because I still want to run that through the appropriate chain to make sure we have the funding.
So I, I hesitate to give any details because I'm not an expert on it. But from my understanding, it was around 100,000, and the match would be about 50 of it. So. Mm-hmm. So I don't know exactly what that would bring. That's why I suggest that they present it to us to tell, you know, show us what we would be getting for that investment. And then we can decide if it's something that we want to move forward, if we feel it's, it's worth the community funds to do that.
And Counselor Young, and your discussions with them too, if they could send over the details that, of the grant, so I can have Oliver's team also review it so that we're all ready to be engaged on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And there may be sufficient balance in that account now to, to cover just 50 grand too. So that is a possibility. You know, without allocation of additional funds. So just, you know, common sense exploration, I think, is going to get it, get you there. As long as you've got the freedom to be able to do that. Sometimes in, in government, that's hard. But we can do it. Okay, executive sessions. We have two that are planned. Number one is potential litigation, RCW4-
Sure.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I still had one, one more policy issue to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you just had two. Go ahead.
No, that is, that's only one. The first, first conversation was one. Okay, so I've, I've had communications with several people, officials and elected officials from the city of Ridgefield. And one of the things that's important to their community that would require council, or not council, but county, working with them on it, and I don't know the capacity, but it would require some, a lot, probably of our help and work. But there, there's a connector that we, I believe we have in our 20-year plan that goes from 179th into Ridgefield. I'm sorry, not 179th, it's the new interchange right there, just north of that, like 209th or whatever. And they are going to need to work with us because the majority of the road will be in unincorporated area. So I, they, the request is out there that we can have a joint Ridgefield County Council meeting to be able to discuss that. And I, I believe that staff's aware of that, and I was just wanting to know where we're at with that and see what we can do to kind of move that along.
I'm only aware from my discussions with Council Marshal at that time, I have not been contacted by the city of Ridgefield to ask for a joint session, and I don't believe staff has yet either. But Council Marshal, maybe you have more information?
Yes, just a bit. I think it would be good for the council to get an update on what the city of Ridgefield is looking for as far as connecting to having another road that connects to I-5. And I don't know that it would need to be a full meeting with their full council. I, maybe the mayor and their county man, or their city manager could come and give us an update of where things stand. I know there was a good deal of public engagement that was done before the pandemic, and, and they're picking up a little bit from where they left off, but I think there's an additional route that they may be looking at as well. I've heard from a number of my constituents who live in the area that have concerns, so. But it'd be good to get a heads up on where things are going and what the next steps that they see, and where they want to engage the county. I'd be all for that.
Anything else on that, Counselor Young?
Uh, nope. As long as we're working on facilitating that. And cheats, maybe, I, I'm not sure what exactly the request is. Maybe we can just reach out to them and ask what they want. If they don't want to counsel, the council, then that's whatever they need.
Okay, very good.
I'll follow up with, so we can follow up with our staff to see what they know, and maybe even have our staff reach out to their staff, because they're, they haven't contacted me, and I don't want to overstep our role as well. So at least we can get the baseline of where, what we're doing, where we're at, and maybe have that joint discussion before bringing it back to council for an update.
Thank you for bringing this up. Uh, executive sessions. There are two, as I understand it. 7.1 is potential litigation, RCW 42.30, point 110, paren I, paren little i, for 10 minutes. And 7.2, pending litigation. Um, I believe it is the same RCW, though the pending litigation designation differs, for 20 minutes. And there is the possibility of a report after on that, as I understand. Is there anything further on executive session?
No.
I'm sorry?
No, that's all. Thank you.
That's all? Okay. Hearing nothing additional. We will then recess into executive session, followed by council time at the conclusion of that executive session, where council time is consisting of a quorum of the councilors who will take any action that was determined to be important based on the pending litigation or potential litigation that was determined during executive session. So with that in mind, we will see you back here in this setting. It is 10:17, 20:30, how about 40 after? That's awkward, awkwardly stated.
It would be 11:50.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Forty. Okey-dokey. So, see you then, and we will see you as we recess back into this room at that time. Thanks, everyone.
So the Chair has asked to extend executive session for 10 more minutes, and they will be joining back in council time at noon. Thank you. Hello, the Chair has asked to extend executive session for another five minutes, and will be reconvening at 12:05 now. Thank you. The Chair is extending executive session for another five-